I'd like to draw the November 15, 2021 meeting of the East Norton Board of Supervisors to order, and we'll start with the budget lead. Vice Chair.
The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, void edition, under that, in this, with liberty and justice for all.
Despite the information our chairwoman is away on business, so it falls to the vice chair to be the chair of this meeting. We'll start with Rob Paul. Chief?
Fernando Vascolet, Chief of Police.
Phil Blasky, Deputy Chief of Police.
Kelly Goff, Township Engineer.
Consultant Director of Engineering Services.
David Christ, Director of Finance.
Jeff Brownbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Alex Ballmer, Township Solicitor.
Supervisor Dennis De Santa.
Supervisor Kevin McDevitt.
And Police Chair and temporary Chair during the time. Okay. When announced that the Board met in a executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters of personnel litigation, and now I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26, 2021 meeting. If you have any questions from the Board before we do that. Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, citizens to be heard. Anybody on? Comments by the Board? Moving right along. All right, we'll start that with all the business. Public Works Used Equipment Bid Award. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Bob Hart, to review this.
Thank you, Vice Chair, to ask. Afforded tonight is authorization to award one of our trucks, a 1997 Mack tandem dump truck that we have replaced and we are selling that. We put that for sale. It's a 1997. We paid approximately $60,000, some thousand dollars in 1997. Had a lot of use and has served us well and in today's used equipment and used vehicle world within. We sold it and we had a bid of $31,000, so it did really well. And the small borrower that has purchased it is anxious to take possession of it and they're going to already use it for playing and in its very small barrel and they're excited about it, so I think it's a win-win for all of us, but that's what's afforded tonight.
Okay, well, you know, that's a good thing. The times are favorable when you're trying to sell especially any kind of vehicle. Any comments from the Board? Questions for about that? Okay, I would like to put in motion, a motion to, of the Public Works Used Equipment Bid Award, that it be awarded to a tandem dump truck for 1997 for the amount of $31,000.
I'll second.
Seconded by? Vice Chair De Santa?
Vice Chair for today. All right.
Now, I got all the most long in favor.
You want to be?
He's got to be Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right. East Norton Township 2022 Budget Presentation. I'd like to call on Finance Director Dave Christ to review this second submission.
We skipped over one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I got really excited. The whole Vice Chair thing, Kelly Goff.
The next item on the business is notice that we intend to award 2020 Liquid Fuels Road Program, and we had a little change of plans here, so I just want to turn it to the Manager Bob Hart to explain this.
Yes, Chair to ask, these, we opened up bids in the afternoon. We thought we had one bid for this particular project and at the last moment, we ended with six bids, which requires a much more significant analysis of and review of these bids, so we asked if you would please table this. I asked for a motion to table this till the December meeting in mid-December.
I'd like to make a motion to table the Liquid Fuels Program.
Okay, Supervisor De Santa, motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Now? Now. I'd like to call on Finance Director Dave Christ to review the second submission of the 2022 budget.
I got so excited, I had it on screen.
Thank you.
As you can recall, last month's meeting, we presented a preliminary proposal motion for the Township, and since that meeting, we've met with each supervisor individually to discuss the budget, and you know, we thank you for the time that you've spent and putting into doing every year, because our 85-page, $16 million budget, it's exciting, very, very exciting. We appreciate the tediousness that you went through to follow our meetings, but just a reminder of what our process is. We met last month on the 26th for our initial budget presentation and the budget, preliminary budget. We've met, we've talked to Department Directors and Supervisors individually since then. Tonight is the second budget presentation. We'll meet with Department Heads. We have those meetings scheduled for the next week or so, all towards the goal of presenting a balanced budget to the Board at the December 14 budget meeting for adoption. So, just a reminder, at the start of each budget season, we set a series of goals that we try to achieve for each budget season, and there's four different goals that we identified for this year. One is for no tax increase. The second goal is to always try to use as minimal amount of our savings as possible in order to balance our budgets, and of course, being with students is an important part of our budget process as well, all towards making East Norton the best possible place it can be for all residents and visitors. And again, just to recall, the proposed budget that was adopted that were passed at the October meeting made use of our 13 different funds totaling $16,667,771. Now, since that last meeting, what we've been focusing on are four particular funds. These are our Capital Improvement Fund, our Park Direct Capital Fund, our Capital Reserve Fund, our Traffic Impacting Fund, and our Highway Aid Fund. These are the funds where the money comes out of for all of our capital projects, all of our long-term projects, and this is always the challenge for us each year, where we have a lot of requests that come in that far out strip from the money that's available to us, so the challenge over the next few weeks is paring that down, get those numbers to match up, and get the projects prioritized for this year and then each of the next five years as well. And just to talk about some of those capital improvement items are, we are working this year on a detailed five-year capital improvement plan. We're identifying all the things that are necessary to keep the infrastructure of the Township in place and to continue improving like we've done in the last couple of years in our, most noticeably in our park system. But some of the areas that we've identified for the capital improvement plan items, stormwater remediation, continuing our LED lighting initiatives, park improvements, technology upgrades, storm drainage improvements, continuing of our traffic control and traffic management program, of course, our road improvement program, and we're also talking about emergency management equipment. There's been requests for funds for string bag stabilization, retention-based retrofits, some new equipment and vehicles, as well as building improvements. So you can see that the list is fairly extensive, and as I said, the challenge over the next few weeks is to match up those wishes with the money that's available in those four capital improvement funds. So, I mentioned this at the last meeting, the four budget goals, the no tax increase we went into, and as it stands right now, we do not have any tax increase planned for the 2022 fiscal year. Over the last few weeks, we've been able to narrow down the amount of savings that we've used to balance the budget in a couple of our funds, so that's working out pretty well, and we'll continue working on that over the next few weeks, all of which just naturally ties in to working on making sure that we're actively maintaining the township financial resources, not just for this year, but for the next five years, the next 10 years, the next 20 years. So that's where we stand at this point. Our next meeting, of course, we have the, tonight's meeting, we'll be meeting with the Department Heads over the next few weeks, and then we'll have the final budget available to you at the meeting December 14 for your hopeful adoption and approval. At this point, be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I have a question, but I just want to say that you're doing a great job on that. I know that the wish list is always longer than, you know, it's like, you know, somebody sitting at a banquet table and their eyes are bigger than the gully and they want more, but that's it, you know? And I'm sure you're prioritizing those, maybe don't drop any off right now, but prioritize them over a period of time.
Exactly right, and they're going to do this for us as I've got Department Heads who do not go out of their way to pile up their list with millions of different things. They really do look at it as items that are important to the Township and things that are going to benefit the Township and trust it, so we're very fortunate with that.
Well, thank you. Keep up the good work. Thanks, Dave. All right, we'll move on to new business. Resolution number 2844, the start of the holiday season. It's just that time already. Seems like it was at Halloween, you know? So I have a proclamation that the Township issues every year that I will read. It's not really, I think. It's a resolution of the Township of East Norton, Montgomery County, Calanoval, Pennsylvania, in the United States of America. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of East Norton Township proclaiming the weekend of December 3rd, it says this weekend, but it won't be till the weekend of December 3rd as the official start of the holiday season in East Norton Township. Whereas the Hillcrest Plaza Merchants Association and the Board of Supervisors and staff of East Norton Township have once again joined forces to plan the 28th Annual Hillcrest Plaza Merchants and East Norton Township Holiday Parade, and whereas Hillcrest Plaza Shopping Center Merchants Association have scheduled an afternoon of activities and events to kick off the arrival of Santa and the start of the holiday season, whereas proceeds from the activities and games at Hillcrest Plaza Shopping Center will be donated to Martha's Choice Market Place, whereas the Board of Supervisors of East Norton Township wholeheartedly supports this 28th Annual Hillcrest Plaza Merchants and East Norton Township Holiday Parade and the festivities held at the Hillcrest Plaza. Now therefore, here resolved that the Board of Supervisors of East Norton Township do hereby proclaim the weekend of December 3rd, 2021, as the official start of the holiday season in the East Norton Township, the East Norton Township's Tree Lighting Event, the arrival of Santa, and the culmination of our 28th Annual Hillcrest Plaza Merchants and East Norton Township Holiday Parade at the Hillcrest Plaza Shopping Center, proclaim the 16th day of November, 2021. Now, I need a motion to approve that. Don't make me read it again.
I'll make that informal motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor McDevitt.
Yes, I'll second.
And a second from Supervisor De Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the holiday begin.
Authorize advertisement for the 2022 Fiscal Year Audit Services. I'd like to call on Finance Director Chris to review this item.
Thank you Supervisor De Santa. As the Board is aware, the Township contracts with a professional CPA firm each year to audit its financial records, and we do that in place of using our elected auditors, and it's a common practice among large municipalities like East Norton, and we've followed this practice for many, many years. According to the Township Code, in order for us to be able to appoint the CPA firm at the January meeting, we must first advertise the fact that we want to, the intent to do so. So what we're asking for tonight is permission to advertise the Township's intent to appoint the CPA firm at the Board of Supervisors' January meeting. This is a function we do every year of this time of year. Would you like to answer any questions you might have?
Questions from the board members? Okay, hearing none. I'll put forward that motion to authorize the advertisement for the appointment of the firm B, Bert Wall &amp; Company at our January 3 reorganization meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor De Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item is Resolution number 2845, authorizing the application for an multimodal transportation fund grant for PennDOT. I'd like to call on our Township Engineer Kelly Rock.
Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. For tonight, for consideration is the authorization of the PennDOT, the submission of the PennDOT Multithrottle Grant Application. It's awarded funds fully used for rehabilitation costs at three of East Norton's locally owned and maintained bridges. The bridges are located on Han, Cleveland, and North City Avenue. Under this grant applications submission, East Norton would be requesting funds in the amount of $92,500, and there is a 30% tax requirement for this grant application. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Is this something to do with the train coming from King of Pressure to the Amazon Building? I'm kidding, totally. It's not really happening. Train's not coming.
Just for anybody that they call tomorrow.
That's De Santa, E.S.A.N. I have other questions.
Okay, any questions? All right, well, I'll put forward the motion to authorize the application for an multimodal transportation fund grant from PennDOT.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
S R Release Number 25355, West German Town Pike. I'd like to call on Director of Engineering Services, Gene Sullivan, to review this item.
Thank you Supervisor De Santa. This is the Amazon Village Center located 5355 West German Town Pike. No trains will be in that direction.
Coincidence.
This is S R Release Number 2, based on inspection done by the Township Engineers Office. All items under request are completed satisfactorily. Therefore, S, the Board of Supervisors authorized S R Release Number 2 in the amount of $45,505.00 over the Amazon peak for coming up.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, I will make the motion to approve the release of the S R Release Number 2 money for 5355 West German Town Pike in the amount of $45,505.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor De Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vice Chair, motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution number 2846 for 2722 Decap Pike Taco Bell Conditional Waiver of Land Development. I'd like to call on our Director of Engineering, Jim Solomon.
Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. I'll introduce this project. This resolution is for a conditional waiver of land development for Taco Bell located 2722 Decap Pike. They intend to demolish the restaurant in its entirety and rebuild in accordance with the, whatever they have over there.
A shopping center?
Just standard to Taco Bell now.
This meeting's like a railway train.
I'm seeing your attorney. Is your attorney not there?
No, he's out here. Christian will take care of it.
So the representing advocate will be Mr. Christian Jacobson, the engineer for the project, and Mr. Jacobson, please give us a brief presentation.
A couple of presentations, I'll set a timer. So, my name is Christian Jacobson from the Petticake, the design engineer for this project. So the project's pretty straightforward. It's a demolition of the existing Taco Bell and construction of a new building. We received various for building setback and reduction in parking at the Long Island Mayor Report Meeting, and received recommendations approved from the planning commission during the meeting last month. Land on the site will be generally the same as what's existing now. Orientation and location of the new building will be in generally the same spot as what's there. Improvements to the site include an outdoor seating area and a dual-drive through lane The circulation of the site, drainage patterns will pretty much remain the same as what's existing, and you can see from the render, what the building will look like. It's really all we have, but you have to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Board?
It's pretty straightforward. This is kind of a normal thing for a fast food, isn't it? After so many years, you redo the store.
Yeah. And I think also the dual drive-through is important in today's, you see?
Well, yeah. Other than the leg over there.
Yes, so with the dual drive-through and then the outdoor seating, I think they're the biggest, other than it being more attractive now, obviously, I think they're the two sort of things that are sort of afflicting at the times, like a lot of our businesses.
Was there a variance needed for the outdoor seating? Is that something they considered?
There was no variance needed for the outdoor seating, but the variance for the right-of-way setback. The change, kind of change on them, was it hard to, the data not create? And planning commission gave you favorable recommendation on this at their October meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay. And we're ready to make a motion here to grant the conditional waiver of land development for 2722 Decap Pike to Taco Bell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor De Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have the approval, the appeal of Profco East Norton LLC decision. I'd like to call my Solicitor, Alex Ballmer, to explain this a little bit.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, very straightforward, there of course, as the Board and the Township is aware, throughout the series of meetings last fall, Profco had brought in a vacation for preliminary file of land development to construct a wall on Decap Pike across essentially three parcels that, a diner, a car wash, and the AT&amp;T building. That approval was issued by this Board in December of 2020. There was a particular condition that was placed on a shared access drive between the North Town Shopping Center and the property. The Board restricted access of traffic across this easement to one way and the approval condition upon that. Profco took issue with that restriction and filed an appeal, as is their right to the Court of Common Pleas. And throughout the remainder of 2021, the parties, including the intervenor enjoying property under with the nose of the T's in the North Town Shopping Center, they went back and forth on what to do, particularly with this access drive. The whole concept here was that additional four feet would be needed to make two-way traffic along this access easement, say, for passage. So recently, a solution was reached. PennDOT and Profco are essentially going to widen the portion on the AT&amp;T property and on the property that is owned by PennDOT by four feet, and allow for the two-way access to occur, and it will also mean that the access portion across the North Town Shopping Center of that same access way is rendered moot. That will still, it's not needed to be used to create a two-way access or remain one-way. So all the parties involved are pleased with this settlement agreement procedurally before the Board, because obviously, you're the issuer of the wind of an approval. We'll need to do two things with the Board's permission in which to wrap this up. One, we would have to agree to waive the one-way condition restriction, which means that we'll just reissue a new preliminary file of land development resolution, and then of course, we have to agree to issue the settlement, or agree to the settlement and the case before the Court of Common Pleas. There was a stipulation in the settlement agreement that says we will do so when Profco receives its highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. So those are the two items before you guys to approve tonight, basically the waiver of the one-way condition and to agree to participate in the settlement and determine the case.
Mr. Solicitor, I assume you want them acted on separately?
Yeah, yeah, you get two different motions.
Correct. Well, thank you, Alex. I'm pleased to see that the parties came to an ethical settlement. I remember that was one of our longer meetings. It was a Zoom meeting, I believe, and it was very contentious, and we basically threw it back and said, you guys fight it out, come back and tell us. And now, we did. Okay, so we'll take the first one first, the waiver of the one-way restriction which we imposed. I make a motion to waive that one-way restriction so that the settlement goes forward. So do I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now, on the appeal of the Profco LLC decision, I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement that, from the decision that was dated December 8, 2020, so that it's a legal settlement, and I'll make that motion to approve, but do I have a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor De Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Right. Authorization to advertise or advance East Norton Township Police Pension Plan Amendment Number 6. I'd like to call Township Manager Bob Hart, your idiot.
Thank you Supervisor De Santa. As you recall, during negotiations for our last police contract, one of the additions to the contract was the Township offered a early retirement option. Specifically, the pension plan was to include a early retirement benefit to members of the police force with 20 or more years of vested service, to terminate employment prior to the completion of normal age and service requirement, and who files an application. This is an option, just truly to retire to early, you basically take a little bit of penalty by having that option to get out early. It was agreed in contract. This is just putting it in ordinance form to make a law of the East Norton Township. So that's what's before you tonight. And this, by the way, this is just advertised, upside, this is advertised, but that's the gist of the change, not really the change. It's in the contract already.
This is just advertised.
Just codified, yeah, and then advertising to it really to be codified in December.
Okay, so we'll come up at a future meeting. This is the advertisement, it's not to make it right now. Well, any comments from the Board? Okay, I would make a motion then to allow the authorization to advertise for this East Norton Township Police Pension Plan Amendment Number 6. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
On the expenditures, I expect you to be gracefully addressed this item.
Thank you again Supervisor De Santa. Presented to you tonight are the Township's expenditures for the month, more specifically the expenditures from the date of the last board meeting to the day of this board meeting. Those expenditures are total, $10,000. $923.50. The accounts payable expenditures, the payments for utility supply services, a total of $99,735.15, and the payroll expenditures, specifically salaries, wages, taxes, were $311,187.43. And Township staff is again asking for the approval of these expenditures. Would you like to answer any questions you might have?
Okay, I'm not going to go through the numbers again. I'd call for a motion to approve of the monthly expenditures from the period October 27 through November 16.
Seventeen.
So group by Supervisor De Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Okay.
Other business? Sorry, we couldn't see the bottom line here. Any, was there a quick broad up at this time?
I just have, thanks for being a week away. I think that it's kind of corny to say it, but to send it, I'm thankful for all of you who worked in this building and made everything run. It's an understatement. I know that I try to be the jovial up here and keep a light. I will say that the budget in particular, sometimes the budget presentation, and this is no offense to you, is torturous because it's very long and tedious, but I can remember my first year as a supervisor, when I went, came in for the budget presentation, everything was rent, and I immediately started to sweat, and here that was the preliminary budget, and I was... And here that was the preliminary budget, and I was, you know, it was like the pie in the sky, asking the fact that you're able to, as a team, work together and bring it down to a point that it's not detrimental to services for people who live in this township is remarkable. A safe, warm, or, we haven't met these here, I think that get lost. And from leaf collection every Monday to artists, our street are the cleanest in a snowstorm, to the police who greet the kids in the morning when they go into the schools. You all, a piece of all of you is everywhere in this township, and I think that you should be commended, and I am thankful for all of you who are sitting here and all of the people who you work with every day. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and thank you for everything you do. Eat that.
I'm going to agree with that. And I know one better, and I'm thankful for the board members that I serve with here and I continue to serve with. Not all boards are this way. We always agree on things, but we come to compromises, and we understand each other, we're respectful of each other, we all have our opinions, but we all serve in the capacity that we want the best for our township and for our residents. And the staff reflects that, and they think, you know, we got to give it a big head, but manager Bob Hart, he's the head of that, and it serves him for him, so I'm thankful for having him.
No, no, you said it wrong.
On that note, we'll go to the manager's update. Thank you. Thank you to the board, it's kind words, and we feel appreciated. Just want to comment, make a comment, if you've been on Facebook, you've seen some comments in the last 24 hours about Whitehall Road. As you know, with the problems that tropical storm I have caused, I could tell you that Pendott reported over 600 bridges, of its bridges, throughout the Commonwealth with damage, and having to repair all of them is quite a challenge. Unfortunately, Whitehall Road Bridge is one of those bridges. Early October, we had a phone call, because we speak to Pendott approximately, there are two weeks for updates. We spoke to Pendott, who explained to us that it was going out to bid, and it would, the projected repair completion time would be sometime in mid-December. Unfortunately, apparently that went wrong in their internal processes. We were notified out of nowhere yesterday that it will be, the repairs will be complete, they're significant, and they will be expected to be completed in July of 2022. We immediately shared with Pendott representatives our concern over that, that Whitehall Road is a critical road for emergency services specifically. The high school is right down there, there are neighborhoods down there, it is a, our fire company is running against the road. It creates a potentially serious situation. We shared that, we immediately reached out to our state senator, Mandy Capelletti, and our state representative, Matt Bradford. They are addressing it with Pendott. I have no idea how it will play out. I understand some timelines are just beyond anyone's control, we have that much damage to so many different bridges, but I want everyone to know that we continue to do everything we can to move this along and expedite it as best we can. Unfortunately, we have almost no say other than to explain that it's a critical federal affair for us, and it's important for not only us, but for our township as well. So I wanted to let you know that that is really what's going on with the Whitehall Road Bridge, and we will continue to provide updates via Facebook at upcoming meetings, and hopefully it's done long before July of 2022. Lastly, I just want to say we have, I did have a resident, one of our board members, board chair, asked me a couple questions via email, and I said I would respond, or I didn't say that, but I'm going to respond three times. We have, David Babbitt is working, his company is working on putting everything in place when it comes to ordinances and our code, from the comprehensive plan, if you remember, that was the general plan, and then they were coming in to look at our zoning ordinances and such and try to make it make more sense, update it. Ours was outdated in a lot of ways, but really put a comprehensive fix on that, really re-imagine. They are in the process of doing that, they have been. I reached out for, Jim Sullivan reached out for the most recent update today, we did not get it in time, so I will let you all know, and I'm not going to say the board member's name, but he is in attendance tonight, I will allow him to, I'll get that information to him, and he can share with his board, which I know is interested in that, the planning commission. So that, I don't know, in the future, I, if she was to say, hey, because I don't want to put anybody on the spot, I'll just go, look at the party whistle. There was another question, I can't think of it right now. Would you happen to know, what was the other question, Jim?
Valuable Park.
Valuable Park, that was it. So Valuable Park, if you recall, we, we have tree, our own tree guys, and then we have tree service going there and do thousands of dollars worth of work with a lot of trees that were hanging and dead and just precarious position. The next part of it is, our public works is going to go in and widen the trail somewhat, and then fill in some of the valleys, and then put a top sort of paving, so the trail is more usable friendly. In the meantime, there is a water project on Kingland, and they requested, they asked Mr. Sullivan, who used to be a grumpy guy, now he's a soft touch. Definitely could use the parking lot there to stage some of the equipment and parts if you've gone by there to finish this project. It will help the project move along.
I thought it was going to be the Dollar Hill Trailer Park when I drove by that time. What was happening in there?
So that is the reality, but we're hoping Jim is going to get an update to when it's finished and then get their stuff out of there. I asked him to get the update as soon as possible, I asked it in the most pleasant manner. So we should have that information, and I will share that as soon as we get it, but that's really what's waiting to do that extra, so we can actually go back in the park and, you know, and the teenagers can go back and drive their vehicles. I'm kidding.
Which we don't.
They don't have to pass, they don't want to do that. And lastly, intensive staff and commissions and board's Christmas party is on December 23rd at noon in this hall. Thank you, in this room. You'll be getting notified.
That's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any citizens to be heard? Anybody online there, Dave? Anybody in there? Just one more comment, this Saturday, I believe, the 20th, there's a shredding event here at the La Cieport, so they're down by the Forest Circle. For East Martin Township residents only, it says. I guess for the poor people in the, well, I could stab on that, we have resisted the best we could to do that, but we have staff there talking to the residents, and the residents say they're coming from Quaker Town, and, you know, Salton, I love Quaker Town, I love Salton. Get your own shredder, right? So that's kind of where we're at. And like we already mentioned, the holiday parade and the Christmas tree lighting and holiday tree lighting, so that's what's coming up. And before I adjourn, I just want to make sure everybody happy Thanksgiving. I'm sure my son would want to wish you a good day today. And now call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDennitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All adjourned.